To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please proceed. Remember to silence your cell phones if you have them. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through eight constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the March seventh meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from human resources includes A. Approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions and B. Authorization to initiate the hiring process. Item five from board administration is to authorize Woodbury County Finance/Budget Director as the county's representative of the opioid settlement and funding for opioid settlement reporting resulting from the Iowa opioid allocation memorandum of understanding from the state of Iowa. He'll be our designate, designate for that. Item six from the county treasurer includes A. Approved refund request for overpayment of taxes for parcel ending in two zero one two in the amount of nine hundred thirteen dollars and B. Approved resolution naming depositories to remove First State Bank, I believe due to a merger or takeover. Item seven from the county auditor is approval of a liquor license application for Anthem Golf Course in Anthem. And item eight from the community action agency, Gene Logan, is approval of appointments of Kevin Green, Sally Hartley, and Kevin Kay for a three-year term on the community action agency of Suland Board of Directors effective April first, 2023. Thank you to everyone who's willing to do that. Any comments on the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
I'll second the motion by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We are ahead of our four thirty-five PM set time, but I guess I'll invite Mr. Priestley up for item eleven. To receive the zoning commission's recommendation from their February twenty-seventh meeting to approve the final plat of Barker addition, a minor subdivision to Woodbury County, Iowa.
Okay, supervisors, this is kind of in continuation of the Iverner rezone request from last week. It's to establish six lots down there east of Sergeant Bluff on parcel number eight seven four seven zero four three zero 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 three. Of course, the zoning commission has recommended acceptance and approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We got time for item B. To approve the Barker addition, a minor subdivision with the condition that the property owners sign a pavement agreement for any future grading and hard surfacing and pavement along Barker Avenue and Two Hundred Thirty-First Street.
And the pavement agreement is currently in the works, so they will be signing that before the record, before the recording and preparation for it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. I believe we still have time for item C. Approve the application. Authorize the chairman to sign the board's scoring and recommendation letter to the Iowa Department of Natural, Natural Resources for the Sioux Jerseys LLC confinement feeding operation.
Yes, this is one of the master matrix projects that we work coinciding with the DNR. Basically, they want to install an aerobic digester system down there and basically the master matrix is where the county, DNR work together to kind of lay out a scoring mechanism for setbacks. I had a site visit with them on May third, which is included in the backup material and we concur basically with the setbacks that they have provided for this dairy farm system, which they see as a way is to complement the manure management on that facility. And so the plan checks out.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Bittenger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Invite you back when we get back to your items. We are at our four thirty-five PM set time. This is item nine from board administration. First is item A. This is a public hearing and sale of property parcel, also known as thirteen eleven Grandview Boulevard. Before we receive bids, we have a public hearing process if anyone wishes to speak for or against the fact that this property is being sold today. If you have any comments on that.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the public hearing be closed.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We are now receiving bids for thirteen eleven Grandview Boulevard. Please approach the microphone, give your name and address and your opening bid.
Hi.
She wants, she wants to bet the minimum.
Name and address, please.
Her name and address or?
Uh, who's, whoever's bidding.
Okay.
Oh, my name is Angelica Rios. So I want to, my address is fourteen oh one West Third Street. It's apartment number one, Sioux City. So I want to, minimum of five hundred and forty-six.
Thank you. Minimum bid of five hundred forty-six dollars. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll move the property be sold to Maya Curious. For five hundred forty-six dollars.
Excuse me?
Can you repeat your name for us?
My name is Angelica.
What's, what's the question?
Just your name, to repeat your name for us.
My name is Angelica Rios.
Angelica.
Yes. Sorry, I'm too much English.
Okay, Angelica Press. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Heather will take care of you.
Thank you.
We are at our four thirty-seven PM set time, which is nine B. This is a public hearing and sale of property parcel, also known as two ten and a half Main Street. Before we receive bids, is there anyone to speak during the public hearing? Hearing none, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Bidding is now open. If someone would like to approach the microphone, give their name and address and their opening bid.
My name is Sidro Serrano. I live in thirty-four oh one De Mesa Way, South Sioux City, Nebraska, sixty-eight seven seven six. And I want to bid this for a hundred dollars.
Thank you. Minimum bid of a hundred dollars has been given. Is there anyone else interested?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the property be sold to Mr. Ror Serrano.
Serrano.
Second motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's it.
That's it. You got it. We are now at our four thirty-nine PM set time. This is item nine C. Public hearing and sale of property parcel, also known as three fifteen Collins Street. Before we receive bids, the public hearing is now open. Hearing no public comment, I'll move the public hearing be closed. Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Bidding is now open.
Alexandra Krula, K-R-U-L-A, three eleven Collins Street, Sioux City, Iowa, five one one oh three. And I would like to start the bid at three forty-nine.
Three forty-nine. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to bid on this property?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the property be sold to Ms. Krula.
Yes.
For three hundred forty-nine dollars.
I'll second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three uncontested bids. All right.
And then Heather will take any guys up that just purchased property.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Priestley. We have a couple minutes if we want to go to item eleven D. This is to approve the application. Authorize the chairman to sign the board's scoring and recommendation letter to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for the Salix Farms LLC confinement feeding operation.
Yes, this is very similar to the Sioux Jerseys one. It's the anaerobic, excuse me, digester system that they're placing on the project for manure management on the property.
Okay. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. We are at our four forty-two PM set time, which is item ten from planning and zoning. Director Daniel Priestley includes A. For action, conduct a public hearing on a zoning ordinance map amendment to rezone from agricultural preservation to agricultural estates zoning district for Maxi's Family Farm LLC and Brian and Bonnie Iverner Trust, thirteen point two six acres, parcel ending in zero 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 three.
Okay, and again, the whole rationale behind this rezone is because of six lots are being placed in that respective area and because of the density requirements of the agricultural preservation only allowing two and a quarter quarter. To allow more houses in a quarter quarter, it requires to transition over to agricultural estates.
Questions?
So we're now in a public hearing on this matter? Is that correct?
Yes. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. I move that the public hearing be closed.
Second the motion by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is to approve the second reading of the ordinance as the final reading. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item C is to waive the third reading of the ordinance. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. And item D is to finally adopt the zoning ordinance map amendment rezone. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're back on schedule to item twelve from the county auditor. Includes A. For action, accept the petition and bond presented by the city of Salix for the establishment of a new drainage district.
This is an item that was requested. Come up. Just explain what's going on.
Patrick Malo, the Instru and Kim, and also these, I guess, who's they petitioners for the Salix Drainage District. As in your packet, I guess we spoke here about a month ago. This would be just, we finalized all those documents, went through all the different legal channels and Ms. Mark Nara and others, and I think we're, I guess, prepared to, for you to review the bond and petition and then for the beginning of creating a new drainage district within Woodbury County.
Want anything to note?
Thank you. It looks like everything is in order and is fine. I think you are requesting that the engineer that works for the city of Salix be appointed as the neutral engineer. I do have a little bit of concerns about that as to whether they qualify as a neutral engineer, but in speaking with Mark, I think it should be okay. We are, right. But we are asking, because our office is so short-staffed and because we haven't dealt with the drainage district issue in a hundred years, we are asking that outside counsel be retained instead of the county attorney's office being used. I did contact three different attorneys that do drainage district stuff and we are, I'm recommending that the board hire Brian Young out of Fort Dodge. He is very familiar with drainage district issues and he is willing to take on this project.
Is that an action the board needs to take today?
Um, it's not on the agenda for today, so well, I just wanted to make you aware and then we'll probably ask that that be put on the agenda for next week, that you approve outside counsel for this project.
Okay. Is there any objection to that being on the consent agenda?
Well, is it going to exceed a certain amount that it even needs to be on the agenda?
I just don't have any idea how much it's going to cost as far as what the estimate is for the, I don't, I don't know. He charges two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, which is very competitive with attorneys.
Yes.
And I'm trying to go back when we've had requests and discussions of outside counsel. Is that something, maybe I'm just echoing your question, but is that something that we?
We do have to approve it.
Yeah, I would assume that we need to approve it one way or another. So even if it's within the budget and overall scope, so. But I think it could be on the consent agenda and if somebody has an issue.
Yeah, I would just ask that it be put on the agenda just in case.
So are we going to move forward with these items that are on here today or?
Yeah, the rest of it is fine.
Okay.
I'll move to accept the petition and bond.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is to appoint a drainage engineer to prepare a report for the board supervisors as required by section four sixty-eight point ten of the Code of Iowa and to direct said engineer to prepare a contract for board approval as required by section four sixty-eight point ten parent two of the Code of Iowa. And that drainage engineer is noted in the item. Is that right?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion by Raddick, second by Bittenger. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item C for action as well is to approve the fiscal year twenty-four county parking plan. Any updates, Mr. Gill?
Uh, no, the only change is there, there used to be some mitigation facility in that parking lot that was just north of the LEC. That has been removed, so those have been assigned to judges.
Okay. Other than a couple extra spots for the courts, no changes to note. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item thirteen from secondary roads for action is to approve the project agreement for project parent two seventy-eight and parent one seventy and direct the chair to sign said agreement.
Mark Nara with Berry County Engineer. I'm bringing back the pre-design agreement for the South Bridge Interchange Project today for the board. We need to get this project moving so that it appears in the five-year plan for the county and for the DOT in time to get this project moving. DOT is proposing to be able to get this designed in line for fiscal year twenty twenty-six letting, which would be helpful to the county in financing this project. That would give us a full ten years of TIF availability within the current growing Suland or growing Woodbury County TIF area that's out there. District engineer Jessica Felix and district planner Deacon Schultz are here to answer any questions today. One of the things that I wanted to mention and one of the reasons I'm bringing this forward again today is that our MPO, which is Woodbury County, Sergeant Bluff, and Salix have all affirmatively put money toward this project. The MPO has dedicated two million dollars in funds in fiscal year twenty twenty-six to assist in financing. So that's the first success we've had outside of the TIF funding for the roughly twenty-seven million total in the project that, that we've discussed before between right-of-way and construction on the project. We have, you know, both communities fully supported the motion to approve the MPO funds being dedicated to the project. Our attorney, Dorsey Law Firm, has developed a city-county agreement that will lay out the payback and what happens and, and whatever else is necessary in that agreement for when the cities eventually develop into the area that is the benefited area around the interchange. The agreement is currently being reviewed by the cities, but I don't think there's any way we can get this done in time and have that city-county agreement in place in time for my August fifteenth deadline to meet the county programming for the five-year programming or for DOT. I think they meet August ninth in review of their five-year program. So we're requesting that the pre-design agreement be approved today so that the work can proceed.
Mr. Taylor?
So if the county moves forward with the agreement today, that fiscally obligates the county to the project, is that correct?
You want to clarify that, Deacon? You need to come up, so.
Uh, Deacon Schultz, district planner. And as far as the signature, it does, this, this is what we've been waiting for, is this has been a locally-led project. DOT has been a partner in it and whenever we do interstate work per agreement with federal highway, the DOT has to administer the project. So the agreement today is laying out that the county is responsible for the construction side. There's also DOT component to it as far as purchase. We are going to go through the right-of-way purchase process. We'll be responsible for our portion of the right-of-way. We are responsible for the cost for the design and administration of the project as well. So although the county, the county and, and with the agreements with the communities will carry the lion's share, there's also a commitment by the DOT for this.
And I think we're appreciative of that. Appreciate you being here as well. Just for the good of the public, who hasn't maybe been as informed on this, what's the rough, broad contours of total funding of the project that the county would be responsible for versus the DOT? If you can just kind of remind us for the good of the public.
Yeah, the, the latest estimate on construction of the project, and this is inclusive of right-of-way, I think in, in this agreement said something like twenty-seven, or two-point seven, or I'm sorry, twenty-seven million, six hundred dollars. That includes both right-of-way and construction of the Diamond Interchange and the connections to Port Neal Road and Old Highway seventy-five. And that, that's a construction estimate. We're also dealing in an inflationary period. We all know it's likely to be higher than that. The MPO has already dedicated two million dollars to this process. The board is part of that agreed to a million dollars in expenses on that portion because we have to match the money that is coming through the MPO. That was part of the resolution we passed about three weeks ago. We're also going to be looking at applying for other grants to help supplement or replace some of the TIF money. But again, you know, this, this project is going to primarily be funded by the tax increment financing generated by the CF and the growing Woodbury County urban renewal area.
And as far as the DOT portion, is that what you were referring to with the MPO funding or in, in over and above the design work?
Yeah, the, the DOT portion, so that'll be done. So for instance, the majority of that's probably going to be consultant contract on our side. And then staff, we, we will utilize DOT staff for the right-of-way process. So.
And then the construction supervision as well.
And, and as well as construction administration, our, our DOT staff will administer the project. So, and I'd like to tell you I've got a good estimate on that, but I don't. You know, we're probably talking twenty-seven million, probably talking somewhere in the two to four million dollar range. Be a rough estimate. And that's thrown in our, our portion of the right-of-way as well.
I think the DOT portion of the right-of-way is about half a million. Correct?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And then two last questions.
One of the things is, as we're, we're a long ways into the project, but we are just starting the final design. So if you're familiar with the process, I know Mark has done many projects. This is, this is that last stretch before the, before construction.
And then my last two questions. You mentioned August ninth and August fifteenth dates. When's your drop-dead date for having to have this approved by this board?
No, April.
April. I thought you said August.
April ninth and April fifteenth. April ninth is when the Iowa, the Iowa Transportation Commission reviews their five-year program. April fifteenth, ours is due, so I'm not sure what day in April I'll be bringing it to the board. It'll be ahead of that April fifteenth deadline. That's when we have to have it in for state code requirements.
And when do we know as a status for Sergeant Bluff in Sioux City as far as the TIF and that agreement?
They just got the agreement. We got it back from the attorney's office last week and we've shared it now with the two cities. So their attorneys will have to have a chance to take a look at it and see if they have any concerns with it. What day did we bring that into the board, Dennis? That was like the seventh of, no, it wasn't the seventh because I was out of town. It would have been the twentieth of February that the board approved the proposed agreement. So.
And what would be your response if there was hesitancy? What happens if the county obligates, let's say, twenty-two million dollars in TIF revenue that would otherwise go to property taxpayers, right? And I'm supportive of this project, but if the city of Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff ultimately don't sign anything, then we've taken a pretty bold risk in a lot of ways, not having a signed agreement, if they say, we're not agreeing to this at all as far as county taxpayers. Is that accurate?
I, I suppose that risk is there for the board, yes. I mean, you are the ones backing the funding.
Because us signing this agreement is saying, yeah, we approve this agreement where you're going to, you're going to pay into it based off if there's annexation.
Correct.
So we're obligated one way or the other. So if there's no agreement, we're paying for all of it. If there's an agreement, they pay their part when they annex.
Right.
So we need to sign it first.
There's no payment by the cities either way, so.
Right, but here's where I disagree. That's a pretty big if.
Not really.
Well, if we're going to obligate twenty-two million dollars, plus it's the largest expense outside of the county jail that we've approved in one motion in the ten years that I've been following this board. And if we're going to do that without any guarantee from the city of Sioux City that they're not going to reap the benefits and they're simply going to have the, the benefit of that development without any skin in the game at all, I don't think that, if somebody can answer me how that's fair to county property taxpayers, I'd like to know, but I don't see how it is responsible to do that without waiting for a week or two for them to move first and to have that. We've signed that agreement.
This should have been asked before the IGR, you know, like why would we have taken all the steps to get to this point, spend three hundred thirty-five thousand as a partner in the IJR and then come here and say, well, you know, you know what? I don't like paying for the whole thing at, at this.
Right, but when we did the IJR, remember that we had a split and we all had a cost-sharing agreement to pay for that.
To pay for the IJR, yes.
Right now, we're in a situation where we're saying a hundred percent is for county property taxpayers and zero potentially for city taxpayers without any agreement. And if there's an agreement, then I agree, but I, I feel like it's premature short of that agreement. I think I had that concern the last time when we talked about this as well. And I realize you all have a deadline, but.
Yeah, so I, I just, just a quick clarification on a couple of things. As far as the DOT's schedule, this was actually introduced to the commission today. So they have another meeting next week, telephonic, and that's when they start to see the projects to populate the next five-year program. And then April ninth is typically when the projects that are going to enter into the five-year program are shown. And then May is the draft. That is out for thirty days essentially for comment and approval in June. Now, with that said, I'll go back to when you were discussing the, the agreement and the funds. So one of the things, Simco has committed a, a one-time grant of two million dollars. So that, that's a. that's a, it's federal money. So as far as paying a hundred percent, you know, it's less than ten percent, but there's a portion of that that is coming from other funds. And then the other thing is with Simcoe, there are opportunities to continue to pursue grants through them in later years, right? There's other opportunities for grants. I think one of, the one that probably lines up as a good one, at least from the DOT, is RISE funds. So I think there, I think there's opportunities, but this has been, this has been a local initiative. I worked on this project off and on since two thousand and five, so it seems like it wants to happen.
You know, there's the, there's a rural grant that is part of the IIJA. I didn't have enough information to apply for that this year. I really don't have enough information to apply for a RISE grant at this point in time, but as Dagan noted, that is, that is a definite possibility that a fifty-fifty RISE grant could be applied to this as well, utilizing county funds. So while the taxpayers are on the, on hook for this, there's no way around that. If we're using TIF funding for it, as has been proposed, if the area does not develop in the ten years of the TIF repayment, the county is replacing that regardless. The cities, and Dennis can answer for himself, he's been in the meetings too, the cities aren't giving us the impression that they're not supportive of this project and that they won't go along with an agreement. You know, they need to have a chance to review what our attorney provided for us, which has only been in its final format. You know, we got comments from you folks on the twenty-eighth. They returned the final form to propose to the cities middle of last week. I was out of town last week. I just got it to them Monday, so they need an opportunity to review that. But I haven't been, I haven't got the impression from the mayor on down through staff that there's a hesitation on supporting this project, so.
Their project for?
Yeah. The city of Sioux City dropped the Hamilton Avenue project to fund our project.
Eleventh Street.
Eleventh Street. They, well, they delayed Eleventh Street. But we were, the city submitted two projects that would have eaten all of the money for the MPO for that year, and they dropped, I think it was Hamilton Avenue.
No, it's Eleventh Street.
Well, they moved Eleventh Street, Jessica.
Jessica Felix, district engineer. So the city deferred Eleventh Street in order to fund what will be their portion after they signed the agreement. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg because they're waiting for you to sign potentially, right? Or you're waiting for them to sign. How it works with the IGR though is with the feds. The feds would not approve a new interchange if they did not think and we did not prove in the IGR that development will happen. We do not willy-nilly put in a new interchange. So I understand the potential burden on a taxpayer of Woodbury County. I am one of them, but I do think that this project has been locally led and is ready to go. It is imperative that we meet that April ninth deadline or else the project does get deferred, and there is a long line of projects waiting to be funded by the Iowa DOT.
And I'd prefer to be at the front of that line. In the past, you know, when the city did the Outer Drive connector, that was like thirty million dollars, and in year one created thirty million dollars in new economic activity in that area. So you can't have economic activity without the veins and roads that create that. And you could see a twenty or thirty million dollar development almost immediately after this is done in that area. To me, it's one of those things, we've made all these steps to get here, we can't not do this at this point.
And I want to make sure my argument's clear is that I'm not asking not to do it. I think worked with Supervisor on shepherding this process for quite some time. That's not the point. The point is, we have signed the agreement. So if the city is waiting for us, we have made, this board has made an affirmative decision to sign that agreement, and we're waiting for two other entities. I think we have three more meetings. I think it's premature. I think it unfairly risks Woodbury County property taxpayers by not having a signed agreement and having the hope that they will. I think if the city of Sioux City annexes right afterwards and we don't have a signed agreement, I think that's very unfair and it's misleading to what we've done and what we've said all along. So I'm not going to be supportive tonight, just like I was in three weeks ago, until we have something that protects property taxpayers, and then I hope it does go. We need to do this, but we need to do it in a responsible manner, and I don't think tonight's action does so. That's just my opinion.
Well, I would absolutely disagree and think that we should do this now and get moving now because of the deadlines, because like this, you know, the chicken and the egg argument, we got to get them along and get their signatures and move forward. And quite frankly, Mark and I have worked really hard already, meeting with different agencies, both federal and state, looking to secure funds so it isn't a burden on the taxpayer locally. And, you know, the Simcoe funds is just the first, you know, the easy step, the low-hanging fruit, you know, raise and other grants that we're looking at, you know, those are going to be the big bites and chunks out of the funding. With that, I'm going to move item thirteen, and I strongly urge the support of my colleagues.
Motion by Radic, is there a second?
I'd second it.
Second by Bittenger. What is the likelihood of the scenario Mr. Taylor mentioned? I mean, the other cities have taken steps since our last meeting in regards to funding moves, which signal some additional intent. Have they taken other formal steps?
At this time, no. I mean, we're, Dennis and I have been working for the last two months in getting some draft language together. The board appointed the Dorsey Law Firm to draft the agreement. They came back with an agreement that was a little different than what Dennis and I had originally turned in, but, you know, it is one that if the cities sign onto it, gives some of the protection that Supervisor Taylor is looking for. I think the city is trying, the cities are trying to move forward as partners with us in this project. I'm confident we can reach an agreement with them.
Back to the MPO, both Sergeant Bluff and Sioux City are both in the MPO, and without any argument, without any hesitation, all signed on in funding this on the MPO. They wouldn't do that if they had no intention of signing this as well. This is beyond me. I think it's the most ridiculous thing that we're even having a debate on this. I get because of the funding, but honestly, when we started the IGR process, that was the time to not do it. We were, we were obligating ourselves by being the landowners in the interstate right-of-way area to these funds when we started that process. And this is the process now, signing on is the process to get friends and allies in paying for it. And that's why we need to move forward today and do this, and that's all I'm going to say. And honestly, I think you're crazy to not sign on.
So the other risk is if this project is delayed, we have to review the environmental document, and so you continue to add other risk.
I think there's a huge.
And honestly, we're going to go back to the MPO when we're going to de-allocate the funds because we're wasting time on this schedule.
And I'm just, I, it's a locally-led project, and the DOT is involved because it's on the interstate, and I am a steward of FHWA when it comes to this and oversight. So I'm just explaining, this is local business. I'm explaining the two, the risks of all the sides right here, just so to be transparent.
Yep. I just want to go on record, this is the most irresponsible dedication of twenty-two million dollars without having any funding agreement. We have never voted on something that's this large with a hope. And I don't think it's crazy to protect property taxpayers by saying, we could take this up on March twenty-first, March twenty-eighth, April fourth. But right now, you're asking this board to dedicate that much money and say, they'll probably sign it. I want this project just as much as you do, but I don't want to do it in an irresponsible way, and that's exactly what you'll do if you say, we're not going to ask for a signed agreement. They have three weeks, and I don't understand, just like I didn't three weeks ago, when I said, the city of Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff, all they're doing, they're not even agreeing to funding. They're just saying if we annex, we're going to take on that portion of responsibility, which we all agree is responsible. Otherwise, we wouldn't have spent the time in outside legal counsel to draft that agreement and then find out that maybe it'll be signed, maybe it won't. Let's just take the risk. I'm not going to do that tonight.
Obviously, the April fifth meeting wouldn't give you a lot of time, right? If the deadline's at night. If this vote takes place next week, how does that going to affect your ability to just make that April ninth deadline? Or the week after? Because what I'm thinking is, is if Sergeant Bluff and Sioux City are this excited and serious about the project, then why wouldn't they have it signed by the meeting next week? You know, I guess.
I don't know what their council meeting schedules are, and, you know, in fairness, they should have a couple of weeks to have their attorneys take a look at it. I think Dorsey is the law firm for Sergeant Bluff, aren't they? So, you know, it'd be a matter of Sioux City's looking at it.
So is the, is the risk the city annexing inside of a certain timeframe before signing an agreement? Is that the exposure? Is that the difference between what we would like the cities to fund versus what they potentially could?
I think the risk is that during the repayment of the bonds, the cities annex and they're capitalizing on the presence of the interchange, but then not helping the rural taxpayers put the TIF-funded bonds to bed. I mean, we take that risk regardless of the city agreement if there's no development out there in the first ten years. We, I think we'd all agree that this is the kind of project that is going to attract economic development. This is the kind of project that I think TIF was built for. You know, it's utilizing incremental growth and not putting the burden on the current property tax valuation, but it's utilizing the growth in valuation to retire those bonds.
Can you explain the risk the county takes about, you know, if the project doesn't, if the project doesn't materialize, like you said, what do you mean?
The risk?
Yeah, if there's no development.
If there's no development, the TIF will retire the bonds in ten years.
Okay. Mr. Dagan, in your consulting similar projects and seeing this play out for so many years, what are your, you know, in your experience, is the timeline, is this a typical timeline as far as, you know, the entity with the lion's share moving first? Or is it typical that, you know, the larger player waits for all the little pieces, you know? Does that make sense?
So as far as, we've not done it where we've had an interchange and it was this type of arrangement. So this is somewhat unique. But as far as the approach, I, that's, I'm going to step back from that a little bit. You know, there's risk in any type of project that you do. You can go out and do, especially on economic development risk, you're betting on what's going to happen. The nice thing out here in this area is that the utilities that support this type of development, the proximity to the other services are all there. And I think this land, especially on the west side, has been identified, you can go back to, I think it was the late sixties, early seventies, this was identified as future industrial, general industrial area, and it's certainly growing that direction. It's hard to argue that. I think there is a, there's a RISE project just in this area that is going to be coming back around. There's additional growth that wants to occur down in this area, so. It's, as far as, as your initial question, I'm not sure I'm the one to answer that. We've had communities, though, that have seen a need. You look at Sioux Center, for instance, they're throwing money at a primary project. We've had Spencer do it, we've had Orange City do it, Hall, we've had, we've had a lot of communities that see a project, see an opportunity. And honestly, as far as the DOT side, I mean, it's an opportunity. We don't always do these either. We don't, we don't necessarily say, go out and solicit. Like I said, this has been a long process, so I feel like we're getting to the end of it. And, you know, maybe fifteen years ago, it wasn't right. That's back, I think George Boykin was the one that signed the letter encouraging this to happen, and it's come a long way since then, so. Risk is in anything.
And I would say, like, where would Sioux City's motivation to not be a part of it? There is no way, shape, or form that they would not be incentivized to be involved in this. They spent thirty million on the water treatment plant down there. They spent like fifty million increasing wastewater capacity. They did the realignment with Seaboard Triumph Parkway and everything there. I mean, they've invested so much money, and honestly, twenty-two million is kind of a drop in the bucket as far as investing for a roadway, an artery to let your blood flow through. I mean, this is, the basics of economic development is build a road to the land that you have available. And, you know, honestly, five years from now, you could have a hundred million, two-hundred million, another billion-dollar development down in that area, but you'll have nothing if we don't move forward.
And, you know, Sioux City also did appropriate, or assisted appropriating money out of the MPO to cover the project we're doing this year on Port Neal Road, from where the city left off with the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth street relocation down to Geleda. I mean, that's a, that's a fifty-year-old highway with a number of asphalt overlays on it that we're going to be approving. That's one of the touchdown points for the interchange. You know, it is an, I think that goes to say that Sioux City, which is part of Woodbury County, sees the potential for growth down there.
And I just want to say, I agree with everything that was just said, and I still think it's premature and irresponsible to vote on this tonight, but I do agree with everything that was just said.
Thanks.
I will move it again. No, we got a second. Dan, just a second, sorry.
Mr. Nelson.
No doubt, this is going to bring great growth to that area, no doubt at all. I think about the frustrations that were had by taxpayers, especially the rural taxpayers that weren't touched by the CF project and the money and time that was sunk into that, and I just think about what those people would have felt like if we had done that and CF had made a commitment to actually come here. And I feel like that's kind of what we're doing here. I think that if Sergeant Bluff and Sioux City are truly excited about it, which I think they are, they have time, they have a deadline, reviewing documents and signing documents is not a hard thing. I think that they can get that done in a manner that we can improve it here and have plenty of time for you guys to make that April ninth deadline, and I don't think that that's too much to ask.
One question. When was the IGR signed on news? So when was that signed, created? On what year?
The IGR was signed, the final draft, in October of two thousand and twenty-two. You then immediately had a press release that we were going to be doing this project. We had a meeting with Iowa DOT, Woodbury County, Sergeant Bluff and Sioux City at the staff level to discuss the agreements and how that would go forward. I then executed a contract for a designer for final design, and we have them under contract. So we don't do that lightly either because that is taxpayer dollars, state of Iowa taxpayer dollars. So fairly, we're fairly confident on this project.
Honestly, we started that IGR in two thousand and fourteen.
Two thousand and fifteen was when the agreement was signed and I think when McClure was engaged. The agreements with DOT took place in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, but we actually signed the contract in two thousand and fifteen to engage McClure. The agreements with DOT took place in 2014, 2015, but we actually signed the contract in 2015 to engage McClure.
And I'm really embarrassed at this process, that you guys are even thinking of delaying this after we've already delayed it once. And really pushing the deadline.
No. Three weeks ago was for the same reason, Keith.
Except for the fact that we've already allocated funds from the MPO in that time. That's a huge change. And honestly, you're really risking a lot by delaying it again. And I, I think this is irresponsible. This is irresponsible to delay it again. There is too much development on the line. We've done too much work to get here to delay it. And we're, honestly, the DOT has been our huge ally in this. But if you guys can't vote for it, then don't. But you're going to kick it down the road too far.
This is the first IJR project that DOT ever put money in. And remember, they did put in a third for the development of it.
Dennis.
Probably can't get down to city council next week, because they still got to review it this week, so now you're 23rd. If you wait another week, you're down to 31st. You're getting very close to jeopardizing this without approving this, because city council has their guidelines to get this on their agendas. So they got to review it, then you got to review it again, you got to review it again. We need to do something, because I'd hate to lose this project. It's a once-in-a-lifetime project you'll never get again. Is it worth, because the county's going to benefit whether it's TIF money, we pay it off, new development goes on a county-wide tax base, so we're still going to benefit from it. It's whose pockets coming out of it.
How much, how much has the DOT put in, may I ask?
For the IJR?
Yes, yes, sir.
It was about, it was a little over $200,000. The total project cost was 648,000. DOT paid a third, Woodbury County paid a third.
This is the first time they, and this is, you said this is the first, that's the first time they've done that?
That's the first time that they had ever put money into it. The director at that time felt strongly and was encouraged by the Iowa Department of Economic Development that this was a project worth the DOT putting money into the study. If that goes into how much more of a, or how much of a priority this project is and how much interest there is in seeing it develop.
So I'll say this, I agree, I hate debt personally. I live my life, I hate debt, and I hate to see counties in debt. But being new to this as a perspective, this is not a slam or a decree to anyone. The board, all three of you have worked very hard over the years. It just seems like the agreement could have been signed sooner than later. It could have been done before, and you said October, but even before that, I, you can't do it before that or not, or?
No, because this was a locally lent project. So this is what I would call a local local. So like I said, we don't go out just putting in interchanges. So Woodbury County has been the lead along, within partnership of Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff for, that's my understanding of the history, and it goes on again and off again. But this was a Woodbury County. As soon as the IJR was signed, Woodbury County asked for the Iowa DOT to take the lead, and we have to, because it's on the interstate. And federal highways requires the Iowa DOT to have oversight of the interstate, because it's economic development and Department of Defense. We then made the determination, at minimum, we would do construction administration and the real estate needed within the right-of-way of the interstate. We made the decision to fund the design.
So as soon as October, as of October, when that was, from that point on, you could have proceeded with an agreement, possibly? I just want to understand the timeline. When could an agreement have been signed?
So, similar to what you're doing, we have to go through the same process internally. You know, the city's going to have to do it. Sergeant Bluff, we have to do the same thing. So after the signature from federal highway on the IJR, then that kind of starts the wheels. We, ours called project review, where we have to take it through management and it gets-
We went to project review then shortly in November, December, to give a status update and began draft agreements. I mean, that's, like I said, we met with Mark and Dave Carney and Mayor Sergeant Bluff.
Our original programming timeline was fiscal year '27 for acquisition of right-of-way, fiscal year '28 for construction. And we have the opportunity to move that forward, which allows us to use less of the TIF funding to pay it back, because we have 10 years instead of eight. To me, this is another advantage that DOT is willing to push this project along so quickly. That's to, that's to our advantage.
So part of that negotiation and project review are, I think everyone's well aware, I have another very large project in Woodbury County. It'd be the Gordon Drive Viaduct. That is slated for construction in 2028 as well. So what we did is internally asked, can we accelerate the South Bridge interchange to 2026 in order to get that achieved? Otherwise, Gordon Drive can't move again. So that was the placeholder of 2028. Iowa DOT can't fund both.
All right, thank you, that helps.
In 2028.
And just so you know, Supervisor Bittner, we had city-county meetings, and we've been working on with staff and with Dennis as well, because I thought that this was important enough that we take this and we have some agreements in place of, there were conversations that have lasted weeks, if not months, to get to the point where we have an agreement that they could sign on to. And now it's just waiting to be signed on to.
But we are the lead. We either sign it or we don't. And if we don't, there's no project. Okay? There's nothing for them to sign if we don't sign first.
We've already signed.
No, we, this is the item on the agenda, item 13.
Keith, I don't think you understand it. Mark, can you please explain, there is a legal agreement concerning annexation that has nothing to do with anything other than that agreement that I'm talking about and referencing. Can you explain what we signed on to that we're now waiting for the city and Sergeant Bluff to sign on to as well?
Well, what the board did was they reviewed a project agreement with the, between city of Sergeant Bluff, Sioux City, and Woodbury County. That if, or, you know, the provisions of that agreement are such that Woodbury County would expand its TIF to take in the area that's considered benefited by the project. We have an area that we've agreed to in concept with the city that's roughly 12 square miles in a radius of the interchange. And that, that would be added to the TIF, and then the TIF would, or the TIF within that area would help retire those bonds that are, you know, that are being funded right now from the greater Woodbury County area. But the only way that those pay off is if somebody comes in and develops at some point in time in the zero-to-10-year period. That's what the agreement states, is that the cities will assist us in retiring those bonds, basically, if they annex and develop out there. Is that what?
Right, and is that, or is that not a separate agreement?
That is a separate agreement-
Correct. Has this board signed that agreement?
We have not.
Okay.
We have, we put it out there, we made comment to the attorney. Based on the time period, he had questions about how long we wanted to make that last. The board determined that that would be 10 years. It was returned to Dorsey Law Office with the comments we, that Dennis and I got. And they have now drafted a final agreement that we passed on to the cities. And again, the cities are in the process of reviewing that draft.
And you're saying that this board has not, by taking the action, I thought that we went from a period of years that we changed during a meeting, that this board has not affirmatively given its assent?
They have not.
Okay, so can we put that on the agenda to give assent to that? And then, is that what we're? I'm completely confused that we haven't assented to that by changing the period of years and sending it over to Sergeant Bluff.
But you did not approve the agreement. The idea was cities would sign off on the agreement, then the board would ratify it, and it would be in a place. You know, again, the reason I asked to bring this forward with the chair again was because of the timetables that we have in meeting our programming requirements. And I felt that the cities had shown good faith in applying MPO money to the project cost. You know, I was, I was hoping that that affirmative funding for the project, especially with it taking money away from projects that were planned by the city of Sioux City, would send a sufficient message to the board so that that city-county agreement, which again, the mayors and staff, as we've been working through them in committee, I guess, would be the best way to say it, we haven't heard anything where they're, they're not firmly in support of that. And they genuinely appreciate the county taking the lead on the project. Again, my motivation was to get this agreement approved with sufficient time that it appears in the Woodbury County five-year program and the Iowa DOT five-year program for approval by the Transportation Commission so that we can begin to move forward. Everything hinges on this. I need some preliminary design data so that we can go out and begin to apply for those grants. Next year at this time is when that rural grant would be due. Next year at this time is when we'd be going after RISE money. But, you know, we need to have an idea of the design and what it's going to cost before we can even have a guesstimate. I pulled out a guesstimate for the MPO project we applied for. And, you know, hope it was big enough, but there is other work that remains to be done. But hinging on that is, is getting the project working and design starting through DOT.
So when you brought that before the board, Mark, you just had us change the period of years and sent it back to, and send it to the cities?
To Dorsey, yes.
And send it back to Dorsey and say, we just want to change the period of years? Wasn't an approval by the board of the rest of that document? It was only to change it to a period of years and send it back to a lawyer?
It was a draft document that we came to the board and shared and got comments. And we returned those comments to Dorsey to put in the form of a final agreement that is now passed on to the cities.
I'd like to see us, I guess, sign that agreement and then have it sent on to the cities and have them sign an agreement before we, I guess I had assumed that having that, those changes was the affirmation of this board that we were agreeing to that, not just changing years and sending it back to our attorney, so.
But you know, at this point in time, that's all Woodbury County territory.
It is until it's annexed.
Yeah.
And that's the whole point of the agreement.
And really, the, to me, if you're looking for them to help in paying back, they have to, you know, I'm not saying your point isn't right, that you're, the board's taking a risk. My point is, you're taking a risk either way.
I think we're taking a bigger risk not moving forward. I mean, we have 22 million planned. We had it allocated from TIF. This is the perfect kind of project to fund with TIF. This will create development. We have already acquired at least a $2 million federal funds. We have other funds available yet to apply for before this project's done. This is kind of a make-or-break vote today, in my opinion. And we either move forward and do this, or we're going to kick it down the road to the point where it's going to be inflated too high to even want to do it at that point. And we'll have wasted six years of the DOT's time. And quite frankly, we're going to really shaft the taxpayer, because we had this opportunity for development and we threw it away. So I would like to vote on it, and I would like to vote for it, but what you guys do is up to you.
Are the, is everyone done making their arguments? Approach the microphone, please.
I don't, I don't really want you to answer this question out loud, but it's the way I'd like you to think about it. Let's say the city and Sergeant Bluff both say no, would you really vote against this? Let's say you're going to go this all alone. This project is still worth that.
Thank you. Are there any other board arguments?
Thank you for the information.
Have you said everything you want to say, Mark?
Yes.
Well, I think the number of years this project has been worked on has allowed plenty of detours off if entities wanted to mothball this project. There's been ample opportunity. I do agree that there's risk regardless. It's not a one-sided risk in regards to the timing issue we have. And I do think that the money does talk. I do think there has been movement made by the city. If the, if the board, you know, governs by policy, we reflect that in our budget. And I think that's, that's fairly indicative. And if there was any inkling that there was any hesitation from the other entities, at this point, I certainly wouldn't be supportive, but I will. So let's do a roll call vote.
Bittner?
Aye.
Nelson?
No.
Raddick?
Aye.
Taylor?
No.
Aye. The motion passes three to two. Taylor and Nelson opposed. Thank you. Moving on to item 14 from Board Administration, Dennis Butler, several items for action, several numbers. I just want to preface this, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but this is shifting around of generally the same amount of funds, which is, in common parlance, called a wash or a wharf. And is due to the fact that certain ARPA funds obligated were advised against that particular use, and so we found other avenues that could be used for that.
Yes, there's no numbers being changed here at all, it's just a funding mechanism. So when consulting with our attorney on our CIP loan, there's certain limits when you go on GO, bonds is 300,000. So one of them is the tasers, sheriff's tasers, and things like that, that we're splitting them out. So when we get done with all this, I do have a recap at the end you have in your packet there. So if we want, we get started with number one.
I think they're all pretty clear, and out of convenience, I would just move A.
Second motion by Raddick to approve to unobligate $444,447 of some ARPA funds for the 28th Street sewer project, and then obligate $444,447 to be paid from FY23 CIP. Hearing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. I'll move approval of B, approval of funding source from ARPA funding to FY23 CIP funds for the five new sheriff vehicles.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. I'll move item C, which is approval to amend ARPA funds obligated for conservation emergency service radios from $344,000 down to $162,745.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. I'll move item D, which is approval to reduce the previously approved ARPA funds for the Trosper Hoyt emergency repairs from $292,750 to $200,000.
Second.
Second by Raddick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. I'll move item E, which is approval to obligate ARPA funds in the amount of $30,000 to replace the outdated LifePak heart monitors for emergency services.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. And item F is approval to amend the funding of the sheriff's cameras and tasers by obligating $300,000 to FY23 CIP and $687,840 to ARPA funding. I'll move that.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Dennis, all in order?
Yep, and just to give a recap, I did include the sheets here. Jeremy kind of asked, you know, two weeks ago, if I have a recap here, so this is getting everything in line. So you know, on our ARPA funds, after all this is said and done, we still have $405,364 unallocated. That number will grow probably in October, November, when they get done with the construction of the project out on 28th Street, our Justice Center. And our potential, you back, come back anywhere from half a million to a million dollars or more possibly. That'll be on our standard reduction use anywhere, but that's, I can't include that yet until we get that number.
What do you mean by our number will grow?
Because 404,000 is unobligated, so if they return a million dollars, that's unobligated funds you can use anywhere.
When do those monies have to be spent by?
December 31st to 24th, they have to be obligated.
Of 24?
Yes.
Okay.
And have to be spent by, I think, 25 or 26. But loans are obligated.
But we have some time.
Oh, yes, definitely. And then in our CIP, to balance this out, a million 900,000, which I have in our debt service already, it comes a million 912, so there are- service already, it comes a million 912, so there are usually these projects here, they're estimated, they come in under, sometimes they come over. And there's actually two, let's see, there's one project would be the 60,000 for the ES emergency service truck, that had formally been approved, I did include it. The Skylight for 67,701. Kevin's here tonight, but that's something we need to prove, I'm going to put on next week by one, include this on the whole project, so you know where CIP sits with the million nine we have borrowed. So next week, we'll have a Skylight on there, we'll have the EMS truck 205 in there, and the rest of them all been approved. But this just gives you recap where we're at. On the back page, you can see the ones that were canceled or possibly moved to next ARPA funds or even next fiscal year, July 1st, and they're on the back here where they've been canceled or moved. So that just gives you recap of everything. Next week, we'll have two items on agenda.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Right at 15, reports on committee meetings. There's, sorry.
Simcoe Certs, Board of Directors. We had three meetings this last week, but it was kind of to create a, basically, the chairman of Certs, me, and then the chairman of Simcoe, which is John Winkle, kind of a group to work together on the sale of the Simcoe building. And then that is basically all I can say about it because we are moving into our new building here and then the building sale will just move forward then with basically agreements to not discuss anything, so.
Committee reports.
We're going to meet Supervisor Nelson and I at 3:15 on Thursday on RagBri and hopefully now that the route has been published, have some good discussions with folks at the Chamber in RagBri and come back with a further report.
Okay. There's been some updates on the website. The board meeting recording or live link is now prominently featured in the recent news section of the website. There's also soon going to be a functioning search function for agendas and minutes, which will come in very handy again, as we have even more documents laid out there and also links to videos of the meetings by date. And a couple other minor things that were just changed or tweaked due to citizen or constituent comments to the board office, so appreciate some of the feedback and Neapolitan Labs are having a quick turnaround time on those improvements. Mr. Bittenger?
I'm leaving for this week.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none. Item 16, citizen concerns.
Pat Gill, Woodbury County Auditor. A week ago Friday, I went up to HR Director Melissa Thomas's office to discuss a couple issues with her, and it was, had to do with about the county's policy for clothing and the attire that the offices use and plus raises that were that were appearing on the agenda last week. And after discussing that with her, I had some questions and it was that 27 pay period that continues to come up. And I was just asking about, you know, because I thought it was pretty clear when we dealt with those issues in the during the closed session. But so I had questions after that and I put together a spreadsheet and I did send it to you folks just shortly before the meeting, but it was just an effort on my part to really understand what the what was going on and what the impact was. And when I sent that to Melissa, I upset her and I want to publicly apologize for that because that was not my intent to do that. But I didn't raise an issue last week and we've moved beyond that. You approved what you can and and we did that. But the reason I created that spreadsheet was to look at things and Supervisor did respond to that in a very professional way. And a concern that he raised is that those were merit issues as opposed to cost of living increases that the other bargaining units got received, but that is what the other bargaining units are seeing. They saw that, you know, they see these raises go on their personnel action forum and it starts to, we start to hear about it as elected officials. And that that spreadsheet laid it out for me very well, what had occurred over the past year. Now, at the January 24th meeting, we had a very good discussion, the board and elected officials, about what's been occurring over that period of time. It was very respectful. One of the things that arose out of that is it was agreed that communication is needed because, quite frankly, it's a, they asked me courthouse bargaining units feel left out. And we're starting to hear it. We're hearing it from those folks and during that meeting, you know, and it was expressed that these people are the face of the county. Those are the people that did my offices and all the other offices, we're talking about them. And we also talked about the impact that inflation is having on that. That's what's driving all this. And so, and during that meeting, Building Services Director, the Sheriff, the Treasurer, Emergency Services, they brought forth, they were talking about improvements and it really dealt with, what I discussed at that time was the same thing that I'd seen periodically. The sheriff had came in front of you and I voiced concern at that time, but when we did that is that clerk three is the highest one that we have, highest pay rate for all the clerks in the office. And that was where we talked about is that we wouldn't have any clerk twos left or anything after that because, and that's what appeared. In the sheriff's offices, there's no longer any, they're all clerk threes. And so, you know, this issue just isn't going to go away. We talked about the inflation impact, but and it also, right in the board office, there are concerns being raised about that very issue about what is happening when you start classifications and job description, that sort of thing. So when we had that discussion and the county attorneys actually asking for the ability to reward his secretaries, and I still think that that's all about inflation. But what occurred to me during that period of time, and I reviewed the code section today, chapter 20, is during the period of time that I've been here, collective bargaining is something that when I first arrived here, I, Treasurer Bertrand talked about this too, is that if you want a seat at the table when that starts to happen and, but when I first came here, the collective bargaining, it was much bigger in that chapter and to change. And elected officials were not invited to come to the table. And it was pretty much is that the supervisors, their attorney would deal with that and just pretty much told us to stay away from that process because they would deal with it. But what has come has dawned on me is that now we have to advocate for our people because of the change of collective bargaining. The sheriff is doing it, the treasurer's doing it, and even, you know, building services and that type of thing that that's going on. And that's just a new dynamic for me to understand, so that's why I am here, is that, you know, if I have to advocate for those folks and that's just something that I've never had to do before. But we're hearing it in our offices, I'm sure in the treasurer's office team, I discussed this recently, is that you're hearing it from those folks that are feeling left out. And during that discussion on the 24th, there was some bannering talked about and it was about a third-party review for classifications and job descriptions. And we did that, the county did it, I don't know, about 20 years ago, but during that period of time, when they actually paid, I think, about $40,000 for this study to be done. And, but the lawyer, the attorney at that time, advised the board is to keep that on the shelf because they had collective bargaining. So they never looked at that. They had, they put that and they paid for it, never looked at it. But I think things have changed now. And so what I'm here tonight for is to ask, you know, three different requests. First is that in your handbook, we have a deal with the attire. And some of these, you know, elected officials actually can probably dictate in their offices what that policy would be. But your handbook is there and so when people see other things in other elected officials' office, there are concerns raised. But I didn't realize is when I was talking to Melissa about that is that the issues were really tied because one of the things that I heard was that, you know, we should be able to wear jeans all the time because we're not getting a raise and we can't afford to buy new clothes. And I actually heard that statement 20 years ago and I poo-pooed it. But at that time, but right now, what I realized, what that forced me to realize is that those issues are intertwined and those people are frustrated about that. So what I'm asking about, I'm going to ask three requests. One is that you put together, I don't know if you would want to go to a consultant or but some thirty, third-party review of all those job descriptions and classifications where, you know, people can feel good walking away from that rather than what we're trying to do when we all come and make individual requests. I'm changing that. The other thing is the the address the issue of the bargaining units that aren't, that are being left out right now, that have been left out. The, who is it now that's the collective bargaining folks that their contract is up this year, so they're going to deal with that issue? What is it?
The CWA deputies will be renewing, so I know there's negotiations on those.
Okay. But the others aren't up for a year or so. And those are the folks, and this issue is not going away, we're hearing about it. And so what I'm asking you to do is that you address that issue, whatever way you do it. I I think it should go on the agenda to deal with that, those bargaining units that have been left out, but you deal with that, what it is. You know, it's just an inflation adjustment, I think, is what what they're concerned with and what they're hearing because what they're hearing, I'm hearing, I hear remarks from employees, I hear it from building service employees and that sort of thing, is we never got a raise. Well, we're going to get two and a half percent, but they still feel left out and inflation is having an impact. And we talked about it, you know, on the 24th, is inflation, it's still here and it's going to be here a while. It was eight percent last year, I heard this morning it was six percent, and it, and those folks are falling behind. Now, I want to advocate for those folks because I'm going to have to be back here in a couple weeks and advocate for myself and my deputies. But these are the folks in those collective bargaining units. We're hearing from them and I just want to bring that to you so that you're aware of it and hopefully you'll do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns?
Tina Virtue, Woodbury County Treasurer. We've had this issue with wages for quite a while now. There's a few things that I just want to clarify, at least for myself and my own office. There are some things that I have advocated for. One of them is certainly the improvement requests that were presented to the board about a month and a half so ago, maybe, I guess it was January 24th. That I don't think is necessarily an avocation or advocating for the staff as much as it is advocating for the department and the staffing levels that are needed. Auditor Gill did bring up quite a few comments, good points, when we look at what a clerk two is, what a senior clerk is, and what a clerk three is. I have asked HR, do we have anything that defines what those positions are? What are the basic baseline of skill set that is required? And we don't have them. So it's very difficult to even know, are the clerk twos in the treasurer's office actually clerk twos? Or are they a clerk three? I understand Auditor Gill's concern about all of a sudden we have no more clerk twos in the county. And I can understand that from a fiscal perspective, but I can also understand it as an operational perspective and what the need is. And without clearly identifying what those rules are, what those skill sets are, it's extremely difficult to sit here and say every single person in the treasurer's department is a clerk two or every single person is a clerk three. We're working hard as distinctly different departments, trying to identify what is best for operational needs so that we can provide the services to our community as a respective department, with the autonomy within our own department and as a collective group as a county. And it's a huge challenge. Our employees talk a lot and it's not always good. I wish it was better, but it's not. The treasurer's department just put it out there? Yes. I have agreed to allow the continuance of wearing jeans in the office because it came about as COVID and we haven't gotten through COVID yet because it was something that appeased the employees. Do I think that we should dress a little bit better? Should we be more professional? I've had to have those conversations in my office because we slipped from being professional to business casual to allowing jeans, to dressing like we're going out and running errands on Saturdays. And it's sad that we have to do that sometimes, but we have to do it. We have to remind employees that you need to dress professional when you're in this office. And from my perspective, from the top up at least, they can wear jeans if they're comfortable in jeans, but we don't allow t-shirts, we don't allow logos, we don't allow sweatshirts. We have to dress with some sort of professional appearance to our community. Their response back to me is, well, our customers come in wearing pajamas, so wearing jeans and a t-shirt is still better dressed than our customers. That's not necessarily true for all customers. In terms of all the other departments, all the other bargaining units getting a four percent raise, when the Ask Me group came forward, they asked, originally it was one and a half percent is what I had supported, and if that support means that I advocated for them, then yes, I guess I advocated for them. The improvement requests that I asked for, they're not necessarily advocating for the employee as much as it is about the department. And I think that it does need an operational change within the department to have the right people in the right places to be able to provide the services that we need to to provide, not only to the community, but to the county. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I apologize to the board. I temporarily recognized two elected officials as board supervisors members. Our bylaws allow us 10 minutes for remarks, so, but I do think let's have agenda items on these for further discussion. If needed, any other citizen concerns?
Doyle Turner, 2738 200th Street, Mobile. I just have a situation that seems to be kind of ambiguous at this time between different people, and it's item seven on the the rules. When I read that, "Public comment by electronic or telephonic means is prohibited except when directed by the chair or a majority of the board for a particular agenda item of a subsequent meeting." Nowhere in there did I read that that needed to be done at a meeting. that needed to be done at a meeting. I assumed that if the Chair could give that permission, that it didn't have to be at a meeting. And I'm just wondering what the thought of the am I completely off base reading it this way? The Chairman and I had a discussion and we disagree with how it's written on what the meaning is. And I think you wrote it. But I don't think it reads the way you intend it.
Personally, I know when we discuss those rules, I wanted it changed to say Chair or Majority so that a Chair could decide when putting together the agenda that they could have somebody on there telephonically. That's what I understood when we voted on the rules or when we had that discussion.
Leaving the option open for the board to consent at a meeting for a subsequent meeting. Initially was proposed as a board majority at a subsequent meeting because a board majority can only act during a meeting. And it was added at that time to say Chair. So the fact that it was put on originally as majority would suggest that it's operating through the board meeting process. And I simply as myself, for the item I assume you're going to be speaking about, Doyle didn't want to put up put something on without having some further discussions. That's to seem like a weighty topic and, you know, involve someone else's schedule.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I just, when I've talked to different people, I get different interpretations of this item. And I just think it would be wise for the board to clarify this.
I guess I was not supervisor when these were passed, but I remember sitting at that being less of that. And my interpretation is what Keith says as well, is that you, Mr. Chair, would have the option to put this on yourself or a majority of the board at a meeting could do that. That's how I interpret it myself.
So I got one more question on the same item. Does this also apply to if somebody wants to respond to an agenda item, not not just put an agenda item on? So if they want to call in on an agenda item that exists?
My understanding is we were trying to go away from that because we had various success with people calling in, not being able to understand, and that if it wasn't controlled or regulated or have some sort of means of vetting that prior or knowing who was calling in, that that would not otherwise be allowed. And my my understanding at the time is that Chairman Hung had said, well, if there's somebody who's calling, let's say from Goldberg Construction with an expert opinion, that that having that knowledge prior, that that would fall under kind of the public comment portion. So I think the intent was to get rid of people just calling like right now, and we don't know who it is, or if somebody's going to go off on a tirade or where they're from, and that that would be an exception rather than the rule, that the other entities don't.
I agree with that. But from a timing standpoint, I think there are times when it makes sense to have somebody call in under those circumstances. They would have to be clairvoyant because they would have to know, you don't have to put an agenda item on until noon on Thursday, but you would have to ask to ask to respond by the telephone or whatever on the Tuesday before that. Did I say Tuesday? On noon Thursday. But you'd have to ask before the agenda item would even be required to be on the agenda.
That's a good word, clairvoyant, by the way.
What?
That's a good word, by the way, clairvoyant. I think the idea, and you correct me if I'm wrong in this, is that the agenda's published on Thursday or Friday at the latest. You notice that an agenda item is on there and the Chair can approve that public comment. Somebody's going to call in, let's say on the wind issue.
Right.
This Tuesday at four forty, that approximate time is that am I? So if the Chair gives that approval, that could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Or if the Chair said no, and then we could direct as a majority of the board, no, this person should be heard.
The reason I didn't suggest that in the original draft of the rule is that I didn't want to be accused of being partial if one person gets on, another person doesn't. And I think we had a little bit of discussion about that. So that's why it's targeted towards a particular item so that, you know, one person doesn't have carte blanche for any items on the agenda and it's confined to a topic that's known. So again, I receive the board's powers to do that interilaterally. But again, I, you know, you kind of open up, you know, well, if you approve them to call in thirty minutes before the meeting, why not, you know, my friend on the phone fifteen minutes before the board meeting starts? And then that's why it's there's the option to put it to the board, which is where it is right now.
So I guess I'm still a little confused. If we took your definition that you had to do it in the meeting prior, but if you were just calling in on an agenda item, you could ask you directly, is that's the way I'm taking it? Am I wrong there?
Well, you're taking the meaning of subsequent as anything after the moment you're talking about, right?
Well, subsequent just means something in the future. It doesn't mean that you are, that is a direct timeline from one meeting to the next.
So for your item that you would like electronic participation on, subsequent can mean anytime in the future, not necessarily the fourteenth or the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth. So there's no need for you to be trying to target a particular date if you know the topic, you know the speaker, and you're trying to work out a schedule for someone to call in and present to the board.
I guess I don't get your point. Sorry.
If you want the board to approve someone to call in and present to us on a particular topic, we can concede to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
If, as you say, subsequent means anytime in the future, if it works for them to call in next week, fine, it'll be on the agenda if it's timely submitted. If it works for them the following Tuesday, that'll be the case. But I know you were dealing with having to go back and confirm with someone to see if they could make it. It's kind of the chicken and the egg thing again.
Right.
Can we do it? Can you do it? Can you do? Just, that's, that's possible. That's what the board can do right now.
Okay. So the board can do it in a meeting?
Yes.
So does the Chairman have the authority to do it outside of a meeting?
The board would say yes. And again, I was not aware of, I think that the topic of this needs to be brought up to the board. So I think it does need to be at a meeting. And that's my prerogative.
The topic of this particular rule seven?
No, not of this rule, of whatever you're actually coming up here to ask us to do tonight.
I'm not going to ask you to do anything tonight.
You're not?
That meeting already took place this morning.
Okay.
I'll just tell you, Sioux County requires twenty-four hours' notice.
Okay.
So on that deal, I was working hard to have Woodbury County at the front of it. You were not only at the front, you were the only one they're actually planning on talking to. You're not on the list anymore.
Well, I guess they'll only talk to you and not to any supervisors.
Well, they already have talked to supervisors. They just didn't talk to Woodbury County supervisors.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Any other board concerns?
I had a, let me turn my, the concern about the legislative meeting that, so after our letter went out, we got notification from some of our senators and representatives requesting, well, maybe we have a meeting with them at some time or place. I suggested they talk with Matthew because he's the Chair and can set meetings for the board. But, you know, we had done this in the past where we had kind of like a lobbying meeting with their local elected officials. And a date that they said would work for them was either the eighth or the fifteenth of April. So that would be Saturday. That would be Senators DeWitt and Alons. And I know Representatives Bossman and Henderson were both available as well. And they were looking to potentially even invite both Manona and Plymouth County supervisors as well. But they would need a time and location. And I let her know that for me, Saturday is terrible and I won't make it. So but that's why I thought if we could get a date and time or location for you from you guys, if anything works on either of those Saturdays, let me know and I will get those back to them.
I could do either Saturday.
I could do the eighth. One of the wife of one of the legislators reached out to me, but didn't have any detail on anyone's availability. So appreciate that update. I assume that's here in town?
Somewhere in town. I suggested maybe even like the Art Center because they have a little room that has chairs and kind of a stage. So but I figured we'd want something that's open on Saturdays. And courthouse itself isn't typically used on Saturday from. So I don't know if you guys have a preference on location or not. Of course, I'm sure Lewis and Clark Interpretive Center has its room as well with a stage. They also have a big conference room. So. Any guys, so we got Matthew on the eighth, either works for Jeremy, either for you guys down there?
Either one's fine for me. Yeah, both work for me.
All right.
Okay.
Well, I'll let them kind of decide on a location, but I'll give those suggestions unless anybody else has a great idea as far as the location. Home Furniture will be too busy to have it there.
I don't know, last time we did it in the old boardroom upstairs, but again, that would require probably a couple hours.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, if they're going to have a couple other supervisors from neighboring counties, then probably one of the bigger room as well. All right. Well, I'll call them back and let them know.
Which legislator should I expect to call from? Or should I be calling one of them in particular?
Probably you.
Okay.
It's probably Rashad JD.
Oh, yeah, okay. All righty. Any other thing for the good of the cause?